Good evening, it is six thirty, we'd like to call our regular board meeting for February to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to see everybody tonight, happy Valentine's Day, we hope that's going well for you. Angie will be out this evening, she has to help with a recital or something that she got called to, so she just wanted to let us know of that. Otherwise, we have everybody here tonight, so we're good. We'll start with number three, approval of the agenda, anything to revise, add, or change?
I'll have a few items underneath my board report that's changed since then, so you're informed before we do any action later.
Okay, so those will just be under your board report, good to know, and any other changes, additions, deleting? All right, if not, we'll hear a motion.
Second.
Approval by Don, second by Barb, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. All right, number four, we would like to move on to the acceptance of donations. And we'll see those up here. Whereas the following donations were received, hundred and fifty dollars from the Wyndham Elementary PTO for third grade, Battle of the Books, two hundred dollars from the Wyndham Kiwanis Club for the Dare Program, fifty-five dollars from Bethany Lutheran for the Backpack Program. So we're very grateful for all of those, any questions? If not, hear a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Bruce, second by Don, and with great thanks, all those in favor signify, say an aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, very grateful for those, thank you. Number five is open forum, there's nothing listed for me, is there?
No one's contacted for open forum.
Very well, thank you. Number six, this would be the approval of the consent agenda. It's of course in the packet here to look over, any questions or anything on that?
I have a couple of comments. I was reading through those and found a couple of mistakes, so like in item six one, the minutes are supposed to be from January ten, eighteen, twenty-four, and twenty-seven. So we need to have that correction. And then there was, pick one other one that, I think I talked to Tammy about that and she was gonna correct, there was just a couple of misspelled words on a different one, so. So, but the dates on the minutes should be changed.
Okay, thanks, Don, make those changes then for the tenth, eighteenth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-seventh, thank you for making note of that. Anything else?
Do we need to pull that off because, and then revote?
It's a friendly correction, it's a minor.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Barb, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Number six, that motion passes, thank you everyone. That brings us to number seven, these are information, we'll start with the administrative reports. And we have Mr. Nielsen here tonight, thank you for being here, nice to see you. And we'll start with the grade pre-K through five report.
Great, thank you, happy Valentine's Day, it's great to be here. Just wanted to report on the elementary school, pre-K through five. The elementary teachers, they participated in Open Door Day last week. This was supported by Q Comp as we had a substitute teacher come in to cover some classrooms so that teachers could observe their colleagues and watch them teach a lesson. Went very, very well, it was a great opportunity to learn from one another, build our collaborative culture, of course, and definitely making connections with fellow teachers as we seem to do every day there at the elementary, which is a good thing, very good thing. Another big event coming up, we have a family night, a family engagement night, this will be February seventeenth, so Thursday from six to eight PM in the elementary commons, we'll have a guest speaker from Top Twenty to give parent strategies for raising happy, responsible, and emotionally healthy children. This is a parent night that our families won't want to miss, because there's a free meal, you know, that's very important, that's great, you can come, get sloppy joes, they'll be served beginning at five fifteen, and it'd be a great event, free childcare will be provided, National Honor Society students, so that's really neat, too. Also at the elementary, we are trying something new here, February, I Love to Read Month, trying to foster that love of reading a little bit more with students by having book talks, so we've added those to our morning elementary announcements. We've had a number of different staff members so far film themselves and share some of the books that they really, really enjoy out of our elementary library, just to encourage students, maybe a student will hear this and think, oh wow, that sounds like a great book. Hey, if Mr. Boardwick liked this, I think I'm gonna check this out, because he knows what he's talking about, things like that. So we've really tried to foster that love of reading by trying this and something new, I know there's an example from our February ninth announcements on there. That one might be Mrs. Frank, we've had a number of different teachers and staff members do this, so it's gone over very well so far. We've had students run into the library to grab that book, maybe that that teacher or staff member talked about. February eighteenth and the twenty-first, they're non-school days for students, on February eighteenth are teachers and paras and admin. They will be participating in professional development with the authors of Top Twenty. And just a couple other important items to share, January thirty-first through February fourth, I know you heard last meeting about the Great Kindness Challenge. I just wanted to highlight some of the things with that Great Kindness Challenge that took place, January thirty-first through February fourth. Was very, very good, lots of kindness was spread at the elementary building throughout that week, as there always is. But I have to say, the highlight of that was probably Thursday of the Great Kindness Week Challenge. We did have quite a few post-it notes flowing around, they were floating around the entire school, all over doors, handed to students on their lockers, on their desk, to teachers. Believe it or not, even the assistant principal had a number of positive post-its on his door, just with words of encouragement. And it was, it was really, really neat. Cassie Muskie, Melissa Pletcher, they did a great job of leading that week. Lots of great things in the announcements as well for students, and it just, it was fun to celebrate that and to really, really encourage each other, really important all the time, but it kind of feels good this time of the year, too. And then finally, I wanted to also share that on January thirty-first, we celebrated, you know a little bit about our PBIS and Eagle Pride, and we hand out Eagle Pride cards to students that are doing a great job, and we have a big tote at school. And when this tote gets filled up, which ends up being maybe once, once a quarter about, we celebrate. And we really celebrate all the positive behaviors that we have, we played virtual bingo on January thirty-first. So K through five, we played bingo, we called it over our Google Meet, and when there was a bingo, we celebrated, we handed out prizes, we laughed, and we just had a good time as we did that, the kids had a whole lot of fun, actually, they're, they're still talking about it this week and some of the prizes they received and things like that, so. Those are just a few of the things going on at the elementary, thank you.
Thank you very much, it's nice to hear that energy level going, oh, kids in that age bracket like to be energized and rewarded for positive behaviors and a good time.
Absolutely.
Very, very well, that's good to hear, yeah, question, are they using that berm or that hill for sledding in the winter, or playing on it in the snow?
Very popular, we have a number of sleds, and they are using that, and we kind of have a rotational schedule, just because of the amount of sleds that we have and the number of students that are out there. So we have a class a day, and when the, when the weather is, you know, above zero wind chill wise, we're outside for sure, and the kids are loving it. I maybe was out there last week going up and down the hill with them a few times, too, so it was good.
Very well, thank you, any questions for Mr. Nielsen? Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Moves us on to grade six through twelve report, and nice to see you, Mr. Joyce, we'll hear that when you're ready.
Hey, good evening, everybody, it's been a couple of, couple of meetings with our busy winter schedule, but we, we are here and we're getting excited for spring, that's all I know. So, our vision's at the top, we've also got the Eagle Eye listed there, linked in our English and in Spanish, so you guys can refer to that, that's a couple of weeks ago that came out. One thing I want to bring to your attention, and hopefully for, for something of a okay on this to move forward in planning, Ms. Shobloom is, is planning the senior trip with our seniors, and we are tentatively looking at May eleventh as the date for that. What, what we did last year was we threw together a trip kind of last minute, because that's when it was allowed by the state, was last minute. And they went to Sioux Falls, and they kind of like doing that again, and they're looking at to do a day in Sioux Falls again this year on May eleventh, so. Tentative details is what we have right now, but they would depart around seven thirty AM that day, and that's a Wednesday. Typically, there's no activities on a Wednesday evening, so that's where we, we don't hit any of that stuff, it's a, a couple of weeks before baccalaureate and that, so we wouldn't conflict there either. So we leave around seven thirty AM, the time divided between Sky Zone and Escape Room, bag or picnic lunch at Falls Park, and then Thunder Road, and then a dinner at Great Shots Golf, the kids liked coming together for, for that in the later part of the day. And then early evening, the group would be returning, so that's tentatively what the, the trip is looking like at this point. Is there any questions about that trip, or anything I could take back to Ms. Shobloom and the group as they're planning?
This is very similar to last year's, correct?
Very similar, yeah, it's just a little bit longer than what last year's was, they kind of went to the zoo and then kind of Great Shots last year, but just a little more extended, because we have a little more time to plan, and the, the kids are very involved in helping Ms. Shobloom plan it, so. So if, if there aren't any objections, I guess we'll move forward in confirming and planning that trip. Okay. Secondly, then, the senior mural, and I have to apologize a little bit, because the mural was kind of ready in December, and in the busyness of the holidays, I did not bring it to you folks to, to, to get an approval, but the students did get presented with four different options, and the choice that they wanted to create into a mural was the one that you see in front of you, obviously, it will not say Expectations, it would say Seniors 2022, and they'll incorporate their, their class colors and things like that, it's my understanding as well. But that's kind of the concept idea that, that they want to move forward with for their mural that they, that they all have voted on. So, again, with, with your okay, we will move forward with creating that mural for the senior class of 2022 and get it on the wall in Senior Hall.
Do we need a motion for that, or just if there's no objections?
There's no objections, that's how we did the last two, actually, with COVID going on, and it's worked pretty well, present it, and any concerns, you ask?
Are we still have fresh spaces, we're not going over any old murals yet, are we?
No. But we are, so, so we are looking at where the, if you've been down the, the senior hall lately, there's a bulletin board that says Accepted, that highlights where all of our students have been accepted to schools, and that wall, if you, if you take that board off, would be two mural spots. So we're looking at those two spots for the next two years, and then we've got to make some tough decisions. So, and it's a big deal, because we don't necessarily want to paint over things, I know there's the nice mural right outside the art room down there, and you know, I'd like to keep that stuff, and I had the idea, the great idea I thought of moving over to Junior Hall, maybe that's Senior Hall now, because then it gives us a whole number of spaces, and that did not get any warm reception at all from the kids. So, you know, that's not Senior Hall, it's Junior Hall. So. So, but it doesn't mean we still can't put murals down Junior Hall, so at least that's more white, it's more white space, you know, or tan space, I guess, and if we could put more color in the halls, why not? So maybe we'll still use that for murals, but, you know, keep Senior Hall where it is, but we've got to make some hard decisions. And above the lockers, there's just not quite enough space for a true mural, but we don't feel either, so, but we've got some, some tough decisions to make, so. But in three years. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, all right, so we'll, we'll move forward, I'll let the seniors know, Alex Garcia was kind of the main senior that was working on the, the mural on this, so he'll be excited to know that we can move forward there. Just an update, our assistant principal, Dr. Jessica Carville, she did have her, her baby last week, so we congratulate her for that, little Peter. She sent out an email to staff today, a little cutie, but he is, he is here now, so she is on maternity leave, yeah, there we go. Yep. Nice, very healthy young guy, so, good eater, she said, so. She started her leave last Thursday, so she'll be on leave now for, for six weeks, so. It was right on her due date, believe it or not, so she'll be back right around March twenty-fifth is the plan right now, so. Kind of through the rest of the third quarter here, so. So we wish her well on her maternity leave, and I will definitely welcome her back when she comes back, so. Grades were, were completed on February fourth, credit recovery has started at the, the ALC, so students that failed a semester course started their credit recovery, and, and just in the high school we're talking here. But that did start for credit recovery last week on, on Tuesday, I believe, so the, the process is rolling with that. We are working through a scheduling survey with our leadership team that was sent out to staff and families and students to get some feedback on our survey, or on our schedule, as we put together the twenty-two, twenty-three schedule. So that information we brought back to our leadership team and then worked through on that, so. Leadership team will meet next Wednesday to start mulling over what the feedback was. Really excited to, to share that Dr. Sandra Campoff was here on February second, great message for our students in ninth through twelfth grades, as well as our staff at the end of the day there, she had a great message on grit and determination, and students really left feeling regenerate, rejuvenated a little bit, and our staff did, too. Talked a lot about mental health, really worked on how we persevere and, and use grit to get through things that are hard, so that was a great message. We completed our annual fire drills last Wednesday, so those are, are done, we've got a couple of lockdown drills we've got to do before the end of the year, and of course, our severe weather drill on, on April twentieth, but otherwise, our fire drills were completed. And then as Mr. Nielsen pointed out, we've got our community engagement night on the seventeenth for Top Twenty, and then our staff Top Twenty Day on, on Friday, and then no school on the twenty-first. Just a couple more plugs here, we have the pre-ACT, gonna be taken by our eighth graders and a third of the ninth grade. The reason we're looking at our eighth grade this year is as we look at our Avid, and being an Avid certified school, our eighth graders need to take a nationally normed test. And the pre-ACT is a nationally normed test, really, it gives us data on the interests that they have, but also it gives them kind of a predictor score as they head into possibly taking the ACT as, as upper level students, so. This will be the first time our eighth graders have taken the test, so we're, we're excited for that opportunity, and also excited to learn what interests they have as they enter high school. And then our, our postseason is, is firing up, I know our gymnastics team, unfortunately, their season ended on, on Saturday, girls hockey team, the season ended last week. But our boys basketball, girls basketball, boys hockey, wrestling, they're all entering into postseason play here, so. And then robotics is obviously into some of their stuff with Worlds and, or the, the state competition, so we want to wish them all luck and the best of everything here as they progress into that and we get into the spring, so. That's all I have this evening, does anybody have any questions for us? Thank you.
Thanks for sharing all that information, Mr. Joyce, appreciate that, sounds like things are up and up at the high school as well, so, good deal. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Got a few items here just to inform you on that I meet with the city and law enforcement, actually got the schedule today, it's the twenty-third to review the SRO School Resource Officer Contract, that's due again. Invite a board member if they'd like to sit on that meeting, it's the twenty-third at, I believe, nine AM. So I'll send you an invite if you, if somebody's interested in that. Sitting on that, we'll be going through the contract, any changes that take place with that. Other items that we have, meeting with St. James for discussion of soccer is not set yet, but should be happening very soon. Mr. Howells supposed to be getting back to me on the date coming up here in February for us to meet on that. Talk about the possibility of doing boys and girls soccer for our districts together. That started with a senior Eagle Achievement Project that surveyed our students, and the interest is great with that, as our growth and our student enrollment has occurred. The other items, technology, sat today with our technology director and assistant today, talking about our future member, our Capital Tech Levy did not pass. They gave an in-depth review of survey from our teachers in the middle school, high school, also about the changes in capabilities of the Chromebook versus the iPad. And what we'll be doing is you'll be getting a recommendation and all the data and information from those two on that, that they've gathered on that. We're looking at, you know, because part of it's also cost savings, because we didn't pass Capital Tech Levy. We're looking at our current annual cost with sale of iPads averaged out over that time, it's about a hundred and fourteen thousand per year. The Chromebooks would be about sixty-two thousand per year on that, so about savings approximately fifty thousand dollars per year going to Chromebooks. And the Chromebooks have actually updated a lot of their on, and the apps have gone to online web-based services, so it's much easier for those Chromebooks to work that, so we have some work to do that still on what we're gonna do with staff development, how we're gonna make that work, also the cost probably for having our paras for the middle school, high school, who work with students to have a very similar device for that, if not the exact same device, as a student, so they're working on the same platforms that they assist students. Piece that came up, Mr. Stevens and I both received an email from the EDA about the abatement for the Guardian Inn Apartments and extending that for one year. The city did extend it for one year, I believe. The initial email asked for two, but I think the city, city only went one year, so we need to sit down and talk to them about what the impact is there. The financial information is probably about twenty-five hundred dollars or less, I believe, for one more year on the abatement about, for that. Something looking forward to, before I get anything else, MSA negotiations, I'd recommend that if you'd like, that we do those this spring. It'd take one less more thing off the new superintendent's plate and Peggy's plate later, because you'll be going from that right into teacher negotiations. That's what happened when I arrived here, we started MSA negotiations, turned around, got done, started teaching negotiations, so. Thinking about that as a, something to help get that done, I can reach out to MSA Union Steward and have them to say we want to start as early as we possibly can for that. It's just good timing for you to not have to deal with two sets of negotiation right off the bat.
Looking for any opposition to that, or?
Yeah, if there's any opposition to that idea, because I'll start the process.
I was thinking that the other, I was thinking that the other day, that I was hoping to get it done, basically, before you left, so that way we wouldn't have to burden the new one when he's just jumping in.
Yeah, I would agree, I think that's a great idea. I'll get that started, then. Packet, if you go to my narrative, I did a summary, just so when we go through the positions that we're looking at up here, because it, you know, You know, it gets a little bit difficult between different agenda items. I laid out exactly what our hiring and areas are, um, right now that are being recommended in this packet. Um, we'd have a reduction in kindergarten section because we will have about a hundred kindergartners instead of a hundred and twenty. Um, point five EBD elementary, new proposal paid by reduction of three pair positions that I'd fill in mainly focusing on the social skills that need to be done there, correct, Mr. Nielsen? Uh, for that and the growth of students we see in that program. Um, maintain an ESL position that we added last fall because our growth of, um, ESL students. At approximately a hundred and seventy plus right now and probably still growing. Um, one point two five music educator, that's taken Mr. Axford's position from point seven five to full-time and then adding that band choir position. At the middle school, high school to cover that. Adding the one counselor position, um, as I've laid out before and talked to you about, um, and then the point five school psychologist. Um, we're looking at the federal funds on that, um, for that and if for some reason, which I'd still need to look a little bit deeper because I thought there was a piece that came out. Uh, we do have, we can afford that either way, but we'd like to use federal funds for it if possible. Um, so cost district right now is two point two five due to federal funds available to support the school psychologist position. If something changed, we'd come back to you on that. The, uh, school psychologist position. Um, if you chose to wait until we get a more affirmative answer on that, that's fine. Um, I just need to know so the service cooperative can actually advertise for that position as we'll be requesting them to cover the position. Um, other items. Real quick, I'm out of office, uh, Wednesday through Sunday, ASA National Conference. Um, I'm at the South Dakota Teacher Job Fair on March second. I take a vacation day prior to my son's wedding there, so I'll be out that day before there. Um, big things in legislative updates. If you haven't seen it yet, the MSBA bill tracker, online and weekly Zoom calls are available for all of you to, uh, listen to. Also on Tuesday mornings. I sit on an MRA one that I usually take most of my information for rural education because MSBA takes a much broader look. And I'll give you updates as those things change, uh, soup call on that one. Uh, uh, very high number of bills have been introduced. Uh, MDE introduced a bill, I think it was last week for the policy. It's a hundred and twenty pages of policy changes through the entire process. I actually read through all those this morning, um, on that, so, um, it's, uh. MRA sent out a, a quick cheat list, if you saw that come on in your email from MRA with that. Unlikely, a lot of items are going to move forward due to our, um, split Democrat Republican Parties and the Senate and the House taking place. Uh, for that, there's some good things in there, maybe some bad things there, but I do not see many things moving forward. As we go into a, uh, twenty twenty-two midterm election cycle for that. Uh, other items that will be considered and I think there will be some, um, ELL cross subsidy has gained a lot of, uh, momentum on that. Um, VPK, unfortunately, I think that's going to be a, uh, I like to see it go, but I think it may have a problem. Um, as they look at some tax reductions through equalization that they're looking at doing. Um, the other thing that the Republicans have come out also recently is a two point seven billion dollar to fund the, um. Uh, hole left by unemployment insurance for private, uh, companies, so something there. Formula increase, I think there will be a little bump on the formula increase. How much that's going to be, I'm unsure, but that's, uh, on top of the current two percent for next year. That'd be a good thing because that'd be a permanent increase that comes through on that, but I do expect the Republicans to push a lot through equalization. Um, uh, some of that on operating referendum and then also on, uh, bond possibly. I don't think the bond will gain the traction that some have thought it has, but there's a chance from more equalization operating levies. Um, as most districts across the state have an operating levy, uh, that or an increased number for LOR with increased, uh, um, equalization. So that'd be, uh, right now it's seven twenty-four, the board authority is, maybe they run that to eight hundred with more equalization for that. Which would just help us off our operating reform, helps us anyway. That's also a good thing, helps us, our local taxpayers. We're not going to see any extra money on that, but we're going to see less of a tax burden for our local taxpayers. Um, do not expect local board authority for revenue taxing to take place. Um, you will not be getting, uh, I don't think of authority for, for school boards like cities and counties do, um, within that. You'll still be limited by your maximum and make choices to go less, but never more within those areas. Except for a couple of categories you have that we rarely use. Questions for me?
Going back to the positions, so all told with the reduction in kindergarten, the federal support and then kind of replacing the three pair positions. The costing would be ju- over just one full-time equivalent, correct?
Nope, uh, here's what I will, you'll have a one point seven five minimum equi- or two point two five equivalent. Increase.
Because the EBD is half?
Yep.
Okay.
Two point two five, yep.
So one point seven five would be?
Yeah, so you're talking a hundred and forty, you're talking about a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollar increase on the budget. Depending on the years of experience for that. Did I answer that?
Just to clarify, the ELD position is here, it's just being funded with, um.
That's a good, yeah.
Uh, federal funds from the COVID, so we're using that money up and so once that goes away, you either have to eliminate the position. Or fund it out of the general fund and that's what he's recommending you to do.
Yep, so to be clear, it's what I'm really looking for is about a two hundred thousand dollar general fund add, even though this last year we had the position out of federal funds. We're looking at the, uh, school psychologists be federal funds. Um, I just had a call, uh, late this afternoon, which I have not a chance to dig, dig into. There's two different sets of funds for the school psychologist or. Special education flow-through dollars. Some have to be spent by August twenty-two and we're making, I want to make sure that these no dollars aren't those dollars. As we go through that and just verify before we move forward with this, so. I'll actually probably ask you to table the school psychologist, just to make sure then A, we know if it's federal funded or not. And B, so you know the exact impact on the budget for next year. Okay? If you say, yeah, school psychologist. That one does not need to be done till next, uh, meeting or the first meeting in March. The sooner we have it, the sooner the co-op though knows that they can advertise for that. And we're doing that one up to halftime. So if they have point two five left over for a position that can help us, we just need extra help. We'll take less than halftime, up to halftime. I just want to verify from that call today that we, I'm not looking at the wrong crossover funds and, uh. I have you approve a position that we actually affects the general fund and not the federal blow-through dollars. So I just want to make sure it's right after that call today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wormstead? Any comments, questions for that? No, thank you very much for those reports. A lot of information to take notes of. Thank you for that. Uh, seven point four, the Board of Education. I can bring up the, uh, the superintendent, uh, search and again, we want to stress the confidentiality of any of the applicants, uh, at this time, really stress that. And then of course, then probably I'd recommend just rechecking the dates for the meetings that we will have coming up through, uh, through March. Um, we have quite a few of those to handle, both the committee and then the board as well. So just recheck your calendars to be sure that we can make those.
Peggy's going to pull those dates up so everybody can see them real quick off the website.
Thanks Peggy. Is there anything else for the board while Peggy's pulling those up?
I did appreciate Peggy that you sent out for the survey that was done or the. The, the, the meeting that was done online, so we could view that. I was able to view that and at least listen in and. I think it's very good information for everybody to understand what's going on through the superintendent's search and it is available for. Everyone to go on and watch it, so I would suggest that. The public go on and they can understand the process.
Thanks for reminding us of that Barb. You're right, there's a link too, isn't there, for those that missed it to watch the meeting? Okay.
Best way is just to go to the website. And click on, well, I, just click on superintendent's search right here and that will give you all the information that you want to know. Quick, easy, two-step way. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. And thanks for bringing those meetings up there and also thank you for sharing those pieces of information. Um, does everybody see those meeting dates up there? And I know we have gone over those and you probably have those marked down. For anybody that's interested in this process, these meeting dates are available for everyone to see as well. Are there any questions about these dates? None? Okay, anything else for or from the Board of Education? Okay, seeing that, thanks everybody. Moving on to number eight, this would be the approval of the project application, project certification for payment. Um, this is for the CTE in elementary, five thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and eight cents. This is an action item. Any questions on this? Or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approval of those payments.
I'll second.
Motion by Don, second by Bruce for the amount listed as five thousand four hundred forty-one oh eight. And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Number nine, uh, this would be the approval, uh, the addition of one point two five full-time education to the music department district-wide. And, uh, to reference this, we could look back to what was in the superintendent's report for how these positions are handled. Um, this is probably one that, uh, in my opinion, it'd be nice to see changes. We see some change in growth in the schedule and growth in student enrollment as well. Um, any questions on this or discussion?
I do think it's a good idea and I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Barb. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Number ten. This would be the approval of the addition of one point zero full-time position to the ESL. And this is explained, but any further questions or discussion on this?
I do have one question, um, so the position was vacated for like one semester from what we had last year?
No, uh, we had a person hired for that position, um, uh, through mi- about midpoint of the year, October-ish. I guess actually a little bit earlier than that, so, um, we were looking for that due to the increased number of ESL students. We grew, I think we're a little over a hundred and seventy ELD students now. And just eighteen months ago, I think we're about one thirty.
So the position has only been empty of this extra position for two and a half, three months or something like that?
Yep, we have a position, person in the position.
You do have a person in the position now?
Yep, they're, they're a tier-two licensed teacher in that, so we're currently advertising for a tier-three qualified teacher for that if possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Thank you for everything involved in that and with all of that, uh, here a motion.
Move approval of the addition of that ESL teacher.
I'll second that.
Motion by Don, second by Bruce. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Number ten, motion passes and approves. Number eleven, approval of the addition of one point oh full-time, uh, position, grade six through twelve counselor. This is one that I think we do need just from the little involvement that I have, uh, with that area and. Um, I would encourage this position to be added for sure. And I think that's also with our student growth, but also with the needs of students, uh, currently now in, in the, not here, but everywhere. And that has grown as well. And also this will help in the scheduling, from what I understand, is that right? Because we have our block schedules and to make that all work out, it'll free up again a counselor to work in the scheduling position, so. Any questions or comments with this?
I would like to thank those that, um, Mr. Joyce and the others, that, the form that you gave us. That went through the list of what is done and when it's done. It gave an idea of what the position does and how the whole, whole year goes for them, so that was very informative.
One thing I want to stress with this, by adding that school counselor, we actually take our school social worker. And have her work to license and serve kids in her full capacity instead of doing counseling and social work at the same time, so we can serve more kids with higher, greater needs. So that's a big advantage of this on, on top of the counseling piece that we got to remember.
Thanks for that information. Any further comments, questions? Okay, thank you. With that, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Joseph, second by Barb. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same, same. And that motion approves and passes. Um, number twelve, uh, that is on here, but we did hear that we might want to consider tabling this until we have some more details on the funding for this. For number twelve and that's listed as approval of and approve the addition of a halftime, uh, school psychologist through the Southwest West Central Co-op.
And so I had a phone call this after, um, webinar this or video call this afternoon, they're going through and things and a piece that went through there and I just. I want to make sure after looking at the funding source and the details, read a little bit deeper just to make sure that. I think we have it right, but in case we didn't, I did not want to say we've committed federal funds, something that we cannot do. And then come back to the board and say there's a mistake and we already committed a contract to the co-op. So I'd recommend at this point, just table this until I get that clarified for sure.
Thanks for sharing that. We do appreciate knowing that and of course, double checking is always great in the circa, in this, uh, event like this. Um, any objections or any questions to that from anybody? Okay, seeing that, uh, we'll just table this. Until the next meeting, which we think might be, uh, the next meeting or in March, so we'll revisit that at that time or table it right now. Alright, we'll see that. Uh, move on to number thirteen, discuss the addition of a, uh, halftime, full-time, uh, half ti- pardon me. Point five of a full-time EBD teacher to the elementary and this is just an informational item.
Yeah, this has been proposed by, uh, elementary principal Frank and assistant principal, Mr. Nielsen on this. Looking at our current needs, we actually have a person who is sort of working on a long-term sub to take pressure off, to work with social skills for what we call. Level one and level two students and Mr. Nielsen can feel, feel anything that I miss here, so be ready to grab the mic. Um, because, uh, our EBD teacher in that program at this time is, uh, fully encompassed with level three behaviors. Or I call three and a half behaviors because they may be at the point where they need to go to setting four, but we're trying not to let that happen. And the second thing is there's not a lot of room in setting four for this, so they're taking the most, uh, sort of tearing that out. Um, but what takes place because of our number of students in our level three program is that are level one and two social skills, so they don't accelerate to level three. Aren't, weren't, weren't getting the interventions for this, so we have a part-time, long-term sub that's actually helping us serve those skills. We're looking for a permanent solution on that and that means not having, uh, replacing three paraprofis- paraprofessional positions, which we don't have filled. Replacing out the permanent halftime EBD position at this time. So, Mr. Nielsen, anything I forgot? And you saw the letter from the two of them in the, in your packet. Questions? Mr. Nielsen's here to help answer.
So three people, hours-wise, one person is less hours. Is it just kind of an efficiency or how?
Yeah, just, uh, that halftime allows us to fill the social skills programming for. The, the setting one and the setting two that are missing out on that social skills piece, uh, and the halftime is going to allow that.
So the paraprofessionals aren't, uh, qualified to do the social skills, so we have to refill those IP, IP needs with this?
Yeah, this is through their IAPs and this needs to be minutes that need to be filled with a licensed teacher, EBD teacher, so, yeah, yep.
Thank you for sharing that information. Any further questions of that? Number thirteen, again, is just an informational piece that we might revisit. Okay, thanks everybody for that. Uh, number fourteen, approve the Highland Kitchen Equipment Update and again, it shows here estimated at ninety-three thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars. Um, this will grow some benefits for our summer lunch program, we hope, or Peggy?
Peggy will lead this, so she's been the point person.
Thank you.
Well, actually, it's been Doug Holt, Elaine Deutschman, myself and Wayne as well. And we've met up at Highland a couple times to take a look just to make sure. Our hope is to get the Highland Kitchen up and running and able that we are able to cook there. Right now, all the meals are brought over by either the middle school, high school kitchen or the elementary kitchen. And they're brought up to that to serve our preschool students because the equipment up there is, is, they can't make the meals up there. So, and there's also our hope that we continue last summer, we had, um, the Highland Building be, be a site for our summer meal program. But once again, all the meals were cooked at our other locations and brought up. So by updating this kitchen, we're doing it twofold, that we can use it during the school year and have it staffed. And then also use it during the summer because that is one of the greatest areas of need up there. Um, especially with the ballparks right up there in Castle Kingdom, um, so it sort of flows. So in your packet, um, we went through a whole lots of things and it's probably really small to read there, but if you had a chance to look at it. We looked at all the different areas and what the total cost would be to do this. Um, some, a lot of the stuff, um, Doug Holt and his crew will be able to do over the summer. It's our intent to get it up and running for the fall of twenty twenty-two. We know it's not going to. Some of the equipment that we would like to order pending. We know it's not gonna, some of the equipment that we would like to order pending your approval is about a four-month timeline. So we know that it won't happen for the summer. So we'll continue to run our summer program as is. But, um, and then some of the other stuff will allow Doug in order to get things ready up there. So in there, um, main thing is, um, the one area we looked at is the kitchen hood. And this is not my area of expertise, I'm just gonna tell you that right now. So Bruce or Wayne, fill in. But we looked at replacing the hoods in order to use, um, ovens and things like that. And just to replace the hood itself is approximately ninety thousand dollars. That is just the hood. And that does not incorporate any of the, um, fixing of the roofing that would have to do because obviously the hood goes up through the roof. So that's just for the... So our proposal here includes that we seal it up for lack of a better word. We, it's not, we don't use it, everything's sort of turned off. And that we purchase these um, combine oven units that are self-venting. So that's what schools are using now versus in that, so you do not need to place them under the hood. So currently in our other kitchens, we have a hood and that's where our ovens and our stoves are at, and that's where they make the field food. All the steam and stuff goes up to the hood and out. And they also have fire suppression, all that kind of things in there. Um, so these combine oven units are self-venting, so you do not need to do that. You don't need to place them under this hood that's in the ceiling, so. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
How much more expensive per unit? Less than forty-five thousand dollars per unit, I imagine?
Each of tho- each of the units are approximately sixteen thousand.
Nice. So definitely less than ninety thousand divided by two. Okay, cool.
So even if we did the hood, I mean, so we look at it several different ways, really, trust me. Spend a lot of time, we looked at doing the hood and then getting the right equipment up there because I think when we had the gentleman from Colonnex, Dennis, um, he's the gentleman that did our elementary kitchen, um, designed that for us. Um, he says that's been around a few ye- so I'm assuming it's fifty years. So not only would we have to do the hood, we'd have to buy all the equipment to go underneath it. And, and still replace the dishwasher and still, you know, so, yeah. So we found out, when walking through this and talking with Dennis from Colonnex, since he has some experience and talk with Doug, um, this is what we're recommending to the board. Now, all these things are under the MDE amount, everything's, all, it's equipment mostly is what we're purchasing. Um, is on the MDE approved list, so we don't have to get any special permissions. Um, you know, we're looking at getting other quotes to make sure that we always have two quotes, um, things like that. The other thing we're looking at is, um, you know, doing a, doing, replacing the dishwasher, um, to a cool temp one. Um, we found out we have a lot less issues with a cool temp dishwasher than other ones. I'm just gonna point out the big things. Um, possibly, I'm purchasing some reach-in freezers versus currently the walk-in freezer up there is, has a small leak in it and has some rust on it, so we're, we priced out replacing it with some freezers that are in wheels. But there's also a chance we may not do that because we were thinking we can maybe fix the walk-in that's there. So that might lower it a little bit. Um, we're still, but I want to always bring to you the maximum so that you know what the maximum would be. Um, so that might be adjustment when we said the combine oven units, um, we'll get a hot water dispenser, um, purchase a warming cabinet. Um, and the other thing up there is to purchase an AC split-pack unit because we have found out that during the spring, summer and fall, if we're gonna be cooking up there, it's very hot. And normally a hood would help pull some of that heat out of the kitchen. But with not having the hood there anymore, we had to come up with a way to maybe take that. So we were, Doug will be looking into getting, purchasing this AC split-pack unit about a cost of five thousand dollars is what we estimated, so. So overall, once again, total cost, we think the maximum will be approximately ninety-three thousand, a little bit over than that. Um, once again, most of that is equipment with a few other things here and there. Um, so are there any questions? I went through that rather fast.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. Have you done a kitchen remodel before, Peggy? No, I don't know, but, um, I really appreciate your, and Doug and Elaine and Bruce and Wayne. This is very diligent because to simply put in a kitchen, let in, remodel one in a commercial grade for hundreds of students, not just a family. This is good work and it looks like you're spending very efficiently. Thank you for that. I know that trying to get the Highland Building, uh, renovated, which was recently done, has been very important, but this will complement the use of that at a, looks like a very, very efficient price, in my opinion.
And all this will be coming from our fund two because it's food service equipment. So once we start touching other things, like if we would do the hood and we have to do the roof, well, that's operating capital because you can't use fund two money, or if you start doing things in the cafeteria area. So once again, this will come from the fund two. And once again, with our fund two, we also know we have to keep that balance in check. They don't want you to, to keep a building up. We've done that when we remodeled the Winfair Kitchen. I'm trying to remember, eight years ago, you know, so we cut, you know, and now we know we got some updates coming at the middle school, high school. So we're constantly trying to use those, those dollars wisely as well.
And that fund basically comes from the school lunch program and that's how it's funded. I do, with the last two years, we haven't been charging for school lunches.
What, what's been happening the last couple of years is the, the federal have, usually, you know, in order to get free meals, you have to fill out the free and reduced lunch application. You either qualify based on your parents' income. On the last few years, due to COVID, um, the federal government have just issued free meals. So in other words, every month, we say we served two thousand meals. And we get funded based on that. So there's no charges to our students at all. The only charges to our students is if they use the à la carte window at the middle school, high school. And I can't remember the grades that get to use that, Mr. Joyce.
We open it up so that six-eight could join the nine-twelve in that, um, but also like doubles. Kids will want doubles, so that will also come out of their lunch accounts. So doubles are à la carte.
So there's a few things that a student may have to pay for, but the, but, and we've been pushing the breakfast, the lunch, so, yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, my son gets triples, so.
The chicken tenders are popular today, so, everybody.
Be careful, you have the board out there for lunch every day. Thank you. Are there any more questions for that? Comments, questions? Um, okay, well, thank you again to everybody because looking at your itemized list, it does show a very, very efficient spending of money and a, and a good weight, uh, use of funds there, in my opinion as well. So with that, um, number fourteen, do we hear a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Joel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Number fourteen passes. Number fifteen, approve the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Compliance Report. And, uh, from understanding, this is when a district has a certain percentage or amount of, uh, students that are in this category that this compliance report is needed and it's been completed.
Yep. So what takes place once a school district has, on the state report, not the federal report, uh, ten or more, uh, uh, Native American students within their school system, you're required to start an American Indian Parent Advisory Council for that. Um, at over twenty students, you actually receive some funds. The deadline for this is March first. They did their training at the end of January, first part of February. In order for us to pull that committee together and actually go through this process, they realize we do not have time. There's an option, as you find these numbers out, um, to say district does not have an APAC, but we need to form an APAC for next year. What takes place is the APAC committee, uh, looks at our current curriculum or any items that they're currently have on their agenda to say that they concur with what we're currently doing. If they do, they send, they do recommend to the board. If they do not, that committee does not, they said do not recommend, then the board accepts that and then has a, uh, thirty days to respond to the concern, written concerns that that committee has actually put forward, um, for that. So it's a process, it's actually in state statute, and they're actually changing some dates if the hundred-and-twenty-page policy passes, which I don't think it will, um, to move some of the deadlines back a little further so that it can be more efficient. But yes, we're required to do this, so we need a motion to pass this. As checked on the box, that the district does not have an APAC at this time, but will be forming one.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, if none, this is an action item to move forward. Uh, here, uh, motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Joel. All those in favor of moving forward with this, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Number sixteen, this is an informational piece. This would be the first reading of the retention policy four twenty-nine. And again, this is the retention policy that we've been working on, uh, for, uh, all employees. And it would be at the, uh, anniversary of their hire date and, uh...
Yep. So, um, as you instructed before, I put this into a, our policy format, policy four twenty-nine. Uh, this, uh, regardless of number hours of work, any regular employee that starts a school year and finishes a school year and returns the next fall would be recognized at fall in service and paid at the September twentieth payroll check with that. So if you have a three-hour-a-week, um, cook or you have a part-time teacher that is a regular employee that's been here for that time, they receive that full stipend. We are not, according to our discussions before, we're not prioritizing that. We're valuing all of our employees for the commitment they do within our district. Um, also with this, so if a teacher has sixteen years of experience or a custodian has twenty-one years' experience, they will get the, uh, level right below that. So that sixteen-year teacher, seventeen-year teacher would receive the fifteen-year stipend of a thousand dollars. That twenty-one-year old cust- or twenty-year service custodian will receive twelve hundred and fifty dollars for that. And every time they had a five-year mark from there forward, they would receive that. It is consecutive years of employment, um, per what we showed before, unless they have a board-approved leave of absence. Resigning your position and taking another position for a year or two, then coming back, that is a break in service. So it has to be a board-approved leave of absence, maternity leave, leave of absence, medical leave, things like that that take place that comes through the board. So the board would then have all those and we track each and every one of those through HR, so we know exactly who that is. Questions on what we have here?
This has been costed out as well to show what it will, uh, cost the district, uh, presumably. And, uh, we've seen that in our packets, so if there's any questions on that as well?
It'll cost anywhere between about thirteen thousand and twenty thousand a year. Uh, based on the next three years moving forward, the very first year is about a hundred and fifteen thousand. If everyone who's currently on staff would be retained or stay. Example, I will not be here, so mine gets subtracted off, um, uh, for that, but that's how it's already set. We are using Esser three funds to jumpstart this because after that, the regular ongoing budget should be able to afford those amounts. Correct, Peggy?
Ninety thousand, we have ninety thousand dollars set in the Esser three. And we have until September twenty twenty-four. I think these are all those funds, so we're right within that. And if we'd ever have any money left over, then we could use that, but we probably won't.
Very well. Any questions on this? Again, this is just the first reading of this policy, four twenty-nine. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you for all that information. And again, if you have any questions that come up, please bring those forward. You'd like to hear anything or ideas on that. Brings us to number seventeen. Uh, this one here, we can have some questions, um, but it, in here should show a little bit of clarification again. Number seventeen is the approve of the teacher signing bonus pilot program of twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. This again is for new teacher hires.
Clarify this, this actually applies to all teachers who are qualified tier three or tier four. Tier three is a highly qualified teacher within their teaching category. A tier four is a highly qualified teacher that has reached tenure status within the state of Minnesota. Also within this, a tier one or tier two only qualify within two years if they receive their tier three status for that. And it uses, uh, Minnesota, um, Come to Minnesota Teaching Grant for any teachers that do qualify for that, but it's eligible for all teachers that we look in for hiring bonuses for that.
Okay, very well. Uh, number seventeen, are there any questions or comments of this? Okay, and again, it has to be the two years to hit the teacher, the tier three or four, so that, uh, that's good to know. Number seventeen, then, um, we are open for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Barb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to number eighteen, approve policy six eleven, uh, homeschooling.
In close, you'll find the red line item policy, just, um, I did not put, have the other one put in just so you could see, even though you're approving exactly what's gonna change in it. Um, so you have a few pages in our PDF document too, uh, for this. It's just new information that we have to have available for the process. If you go to number five and zoom in on that a little bit. Oh, you're up there, the red line, right there. It just clarifies which materials we have to have as the biggest pieces for textbooks, um, teacher's edition, if we have a copy of that. If we have textbook materials, it does not have a teacher's edition. We do not have to go purchase anything to provide for homeschooling. Only the materials that we currently have that we use within our school system for our current students, we'd have to provide for that. And so that's a simple rule of what's taking place here. Very simple policy change.
Okay. Any questions on this, number eighteen? Comments, questions? If not, we're open for a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Barb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, uh, this is an informational piece, uh, discussion of the CEO program.
All right, so, uh, we were, uh, approached, I guess, uh, via email by Tom Hoff from, uh, Lift, Launch Your Futures Today. Uh, Tom works for the Southwest Initiative Foundation and they are willing to, um, provide grant dollars toward, uh, communities that want to pursue the CEO program. So it piqued my interest. Uh, this was a couple of months ago, actually, that the email came out and it piqued my interest. So I talked to our business teacher to kind of gather some more information, okay? She gathered some more information and, um, we've had conversations to the, to the point where we're at now. We're, we're, we're in front of you to bring it to you for your information to see, is this something we want to be interested in doing for our students? That's kind of where we're at at this point. Um, CEO is, it, I want to try to explain what it is and what it can provide for our students and our community to help you folks kind of understand it, so you can have conversations out in the community as, as people might approach you as well. Um, Ty and Marcy, our, our chamber director is here as well. Um, she and I have had conversations. She and I have had a, a conversation about, uh, the CEO program, a couple of them actually, we had a meeting about it and, um, we're excited to work with the chamber. The one thing that I want to point out is, as we start, is that the CEO program i- is not just school-driven or school-based. It really is community-based and, and business-oriented. But we help organize how the students get involved with it. So I want to walk you through the process of, of what it really is. Um, Peggy, if you go back to the, or whoever's running it, back to the last slide. Uh, next one, thank you. Oh, there we go. So the, the CEO program really does immerse high school students, uh, in the business community. Uh, where they learn about all of the business and opportunities that exist locally. When I say locally, I mean Wyndham, but also the greater Wyndham area and communities that we might engage with. Uh, it instills solutions-oriented, problem-solving, entrepreneurial mindset. Uh, and I'll explain more of the details as we get into this, but it inspires the next generation to look at living, working, raising families and operating businesses in our community. So it isn't a program that, you know, encourages kids to leave, it's a program that helps our students understand what opportunities are here in our community. And then how can we grow those kids to have those business skills to be those leaders of tomorrow? Uh, you can go to the next slide. So what it could look like in Wyndham, uh, students from Wyndham, but also other area communities come together daily for a block of time at a central location. Now, it's key that it's an off-campus location. It's not at Wyndham area schools. It would be at an off-campus location, but a lot of the time that's spent in this class is actually going to businesses. They, they do visit thirty to fifty businesses per year. And if you figure we have about a hundred and seventy-four student days, thirty to fifty of those days are spent in businesses where they're visiting businesses to learn about what the business does. And on top of that, they have like thirty to fifty guest speakers into their class on top of the time they're spending in businesses, okay? The rest of their work is hands-on and it's innovative and it's entrepreneurial. So the key to making this work is that we have to try to find a, a business facilitator. And, and the Midland group walks us through this process, but the business facilitator is the person that truly works with the students. This really isn't a, a, a teacher on our staff or on the Jackson School staff or Harold Lake staff. It's somebody who comes from potentially the, a business background that works with the students, uh, in this process. And they call them the facilitator in this. Uh, grades are then submitted back to the area schools that are a part of the program. Uh, Midland is the group that really has the CEO program and they walk us through the process of setting this all up. We are at the very infancy stages of this where we're just kind of having exploratory conversations to see if there is interest in creating a board to create this opportunity in the Wyndham area for our students. Um, there are, like I said, there are grant dollars available from Lift. Uh, the initial startup cost is thirty-five thousand dollars, okay? And then there's a, a minimum annual fee. And then there's a, a minimum annual fee of five thousand dollars to be a part of this. It's my understanding that Lyft is willing to uh, grant the thirty-five thousand dollar startup fee for somebody who's interested in pursuing this. Okay? Uh, and in my conversations with, with the chamber, we feel very confident that because of the, the reputation of, of CEO, we could very much engage the business community, not just in Wyndham, but in other communities that we engage with to bring this to our students, but also we're pretty sure that we could uh, create the funding mechanism to make this a sustainable project in future years. There is no cost to schools or students to participate in this. Okay? It's zero cost to schools or students to participate. And again, like I said, the, the costs are covered by the business supporters and it, it's an investment in their future because these are their future employees. So you can go to the next slide, Peggy. Thank you. This is from Midland and I just wanted to highlight some of the, the parts here, but their, their mission is to be luners, doers, owners, communicators. Their vision is CEO nurtures entrepreneurial thinkers who possess awareness of themselves and their community. And then their culture, every day, all day, we represent CEO with a superior work ethic and trustworthiness. Uh, there's some data about the number of students. Again, if you go to the, just the bottom of that slide, you kind of see where CEO is present. It's very heavy in Illinois, uh, and Indiana, but it's really starting to stretch here into Minnesota quite a bit. Uh, the, the local, most local cha- chapter for us would be kind of the Laverne chapter. Um, and we've spoken to the Laverne superintendent, Craig Goftedal, very highly spoken of. And actually, uh, he indicated to, to us that of all the things that he's accomplished in Laverne as a superintendent, this is probably the thing he's most proud of. Okay? Uh, as a superintendent is the opportunities that CEO has created and what it's given back to their community. So uh, obviously as a local resource for us, as we launch our thought-up process here, having them there to, to see what it looks like to walk this path is very helpful. But also Murray Lion County, they're trying to organize a CEO branch in that area. Uh, and there's one other that's, that's looking at moving. We would be the furthest east and south of those CEO um, cohorts that are trying to form. Uh, there is one in the, the central region that's also trying to form a CEO um, cohort as well. So there's some that have walked the path, so we can learn from them. And there's some that are going through the path now that might be a year ahead of us that we can lean on to learn. So uh, the next piece is a, is a video and it, it's about three minutes long. Um, I think we should probably watch the video just so you guys can kind of see the people who've been involved. And these are people um, that have been through the, the Midland program. So.
And what's to do, other than what the school systems have provided traditionally, this is really something different that I think appeals to business people and economic development professionals, I would say. And CEO is the program that will teach our students and teach your young people to innovate. Not only that, it will teach them personal responsibilities, their business. It's going to teach them the rough and tumble of the real world. It's going to teach them that business is not about what they want, it's about what the customer wants. And there is no way to learn these lessons except getting into the arena and starting that business. So this isn't a question of can we find the resources for it? Should we do it? The question is, how can you afford not to do this? You have an opportunity with a turnkey program to scale up entrepreneurship in your community, make it part of your culture and increase the total number of entrepreneurs for the future. And there just simply aren't many programs, certainly not this proven. We looked at several different opportunities and CEO is the clear number one.
CEO has been the most beneficial, most gratifying program I have been involved with. And what we found with the high school kids don't always talk to the adults. So this engages them to interact in that type of setting to where they now speak the same language. Schools are linked to the exposure they can give these kids in a real business setup. And what CEO does is it kind of fills that gap. You kind of get two for one. You get the workforce component, but you also get the economic development component.
The CEO program that I believe we're doing here in Southwest Minnesota is by far the best program that I've ever been associated with in education in thirty-three years. I think what CEO allows is them to foster what they're good at. And I don't think we do enough of that in education. And then to have the businesses understand the economic development of growing your own and giving kids an opportunity to see that they can be successful and they can be successful right here. You get asked a lot in the business world to help schools out all the time. But when you support this program, you have a direct impact on students and student learning and changing lives. From our standpoint, Midland Institute was the rock. They were the foundation to everything that we did. So from our perspective, Midland Institute was invaluable as a resource to not only answer questions, but to provide training for our facilitator, uh, provide networks for our facilitator, provide networks for our board. Midland Institute was a, it heck is and has been a tremendous resource. And without Midland Institute, uh, I, I don't see how you get this program going.
Those high schoolers, that's like the linchpin of your economic success, you know, five, ten, fifteen years.
So we've, we've gone through some of the essentials here and I don't want to get too much into the, the weeds and the details now because a lot of that will be, be coming later. Um, but ultimately the, the key that drives this is we're in the exploratory phase and, and part of that exploratory phase is, is creating a board. Okay? And a board is a nine to eleven um, person board. And, and that board then is, is the one that then goes out and recruits investors to make sure that this can be sustainable. And investors would come from the communities that we're involved in. Okay? And what this really would look like i- i- in our thought process is it's not just Wyndham students. We would be reaching out to area schools that would be within a thirty-mile radius. Okay? Um, thirty miles is about that radius that you have to stick to because they have to get here and back and it's an everyday thing. It's a, it's a ninety-minute time every day of the week that students are, are committing to being a part of this program. So um, outside of thirty miles, that gets to be pretty problematic. So again, we, we feel like we have a central location to host. Um, and, and somewhere in, in the Wyndham community, we would be looking at as, as far as where that could be, not necessarily our school, obviously. So. Um, students apply and there's a blind process to choose those students. Uh, they don't, they don't get names, they get the application and the board selects who the students are that then are a part of the uh, the, the process or through the class. Um, as a part of this class, the students actually run, start and run two businesses. Uh, one is kind of as a group and then one is as an individual. And, and they, they are given seed money to kind of start that. And the seed money comes from the initial startup fee, but then also the revenues that are grant-generated every year in the program. And then grants are given to the students to kind of start their businesses. So like I mentioned, thirty to fifty businesses they visit, hosting thirty to forty guest speakers, and then there's always a business mentor which eat the stu- each of the students. And they kind of do a trade show similar to like, uh, like you might consider like a, a science fair or something like that. But, um, but they have to have that trade show to show what they've kind of gained throughout their year in, in the CEO program. So. Stakeholders, it just kind of defines who these people are. Um, the, the school, their involvement, the students, their involvement, investors, is any business, individual, organization that invests a thousand dollars per year for a three-year commitment. Um, the facilitator is the key to this and this person really is the person that's organizing everything for the students. All the speakers, all the visits. And Midland is heavily involved in training that person to make sure that they're successful and then making sure that they're part of the greater community of facilitators for the CEO program. Okay? The board is, is the, the group of people that meets regularly with the oversight of the CEO program. So. Um, again, if you, if you go to the slide, Peggy, I think it's that one. Yeah. We're kind of at that s- that top point where we're looking to see, is there interest in our local communities in pursuing this? You know, and I wanted to make sure we run it by our local, you know, chamber first, as well as our school board to say just in Wyndham is their interest. Now is their interest for me to go out and see other uh, or, or speak to other principals, you know, in the thirty-mile radius? And then is there for the chamber to start talking to businesses about whether there would be interest in supporting a program like this. Okay? So that's kind of what we want to discuss this evening.
Tyan, what's been your reception of this so far?
Um, I was really excited when Brian did bring this project up to me. And then also my assistant director, Katie Greener, came and saw Brian. We saw the videos that you just witnessed and went over everything. Um, ironically, we're kind of doing some of the same things right now at the chamber. So we've taken on youth staff this last year, um, really incorporating our youth with our business owners. Um, and our business owners love it. So we've taken on um, sponsorship programs from business owners at the chamber, which is called Chamber Champions, um, which has given us dollars to be able to hire youth um, at the chamber. And um, they are engaging with those business owners. The business owners love it. Um, and they want to have an active role with our youth. So um, I'm all about it. I'm all about um, building our own, as they said in the video, and giving these kids opportunities to be connecting to business owners and having um, possible potentials or possible um, experiences that they would not normally be able to get. So any way that we can be helping with that, I definitely want to help with that.
I would like to add something too. If you look around the, pardon for my cold. If you look around the square, there's quite a few people that have returned. And of course, one is sitting right there. But also um, that should be a motivating key so that people, the youngsters can see that the business really has come back to Wyndham. And if your business dies, so does your town.
And we are on this interesting point right now in our community where we are expanding and we're growing pretty rapidly. And we're all well aware of that. You guys are well aware of it at school. So we need different things in our community and our youth are our future. So it's a good, it's a good program.
Yeah, our students need look no further than our own community to see what it looks like to grow your own and invest back in your community. So we've got a great, you know, treasure trove of that here. Uh, next slide, Peggy. So first steps, kind of as I, as I've talked with Chris at C- at Midland about this. Um, we have to start looking at, you know, who are we recruiting and, you know, as I've talked to Tyan and the chamber about this, you know, our job at the school is can we get some schools that are interested in partnering with us on this? You know, because if we don't have schools that think they can make it work, it's going to be hard to make this go. With Tyan in the chamber, we're asking, can they get businesses involved that want to help us and sponsor this? But also can they find um, the dollars to, to make this sustainable in the long run uh, to invest back? Because we need hand in hand. We need all of that to come together for this to be successful. So we're at this point and um, what we would be doing then is kind of launching those conversations toward having an organizational meeting. And in that organizational meeting, uh, the, the CEO from Midland or Chris from Middleton, the guy who kind of organizes things, would meet with us over Zoom to really discuss what this would look like and how we could take the next steps to move forward with this. And that would be coming in the, the next month or two. Okay? The purpose of the first meeting is, is basically to see, is there enough interest in the community to move forward to create an exploratory or steering committee? And then the date that we would be looking at potentially starting this would be the fall of twenty-three. So that's when students potentially would be enrolled in the CEO program. So there's a whole year of planning this, you know? You don't just put it together. It's, it's a full year to make sure it's, it's sustainable and it works. So now is the time where we're building the first phase to figure out if there's interest in building it. And then is there interest to create a steering committee? And then from there, Midland walks us through the whole process um, of how we get to that point. So. And then I guess the last slide here and I, you, sometimes you start with the why, but I want to finish with the why because I feel like that leaves on a, on a note of why we're doing this. It's a great opportunity for our students uh, that are interested in business. And as we've looked at our pre-ACT data, um, and this was our sophomores that took the pre-ACT, but also students that are, you know, our business classes are really heavily populated. Okay? We've got around thirty kids in our intro to business class with Ms. Hengen. But also the students that indicated business was their preferred pathway, they were a plurality, the highest plurality of different pathways identified on the pre-ACT. So of all the career choices, the most students said business was the path that they wanted to go down uh, in the future. So we're serving our students and we're serving the most amount of students because that's the path that they most like. Uh, it's another opportunity to again, invest and grow our own students, which we have a great track record on and we want to continue investing in that. Uh, it's going to help our students also who don't have the local connections organically. A lot of newcomers to our community that do not have the connections because they're maybe first generation. This is another opportunity to help them meet those business people because they might not be having the elbow-to-elbow conversations with those people uh, as regularly as some might. Okay? And then finally, um, we're at the ground level, we're exploring interests and, and hopefully we, 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 we wouldn't bring it to you if we didn't feel like we could get stu- a school and community support for this. So I guess with that, we answer any questions?
I really think everybody will gain from it because you really don't want empty stores in town. And if you do, of course, that will be, that will affect also schools as far as enrollment.
So the cost um, is thirty-five thousand that we paid to Midland, but there's a grant for the first year. Otherwise, the years after that, it would be the thousand-dollar commitment from businesses that would cover that?
So there's a, a five thousand dollar annual fee that you have to raise for that? But then also we've got to figure out the, the facilitator salary. And I guess in, in, since Tyan and I have met, I talked to Chris about this because we thought five thousand seems a little bit small for the facilitator salary for the amount of hours they're going to put into this. And actually, they, they kind of said, well, it ranges in your community, it depends. But they figure a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars is about the, the correct salary for this person. But then that's the, the money that we're looking at locally raising is, is probably that annually twenty to twenty-five to fund that facilitator position. But again, that's not just Wyndham dollars, that's all of the communities that are involved in the CEO program with us. And engaging with all of those folks to raise that money. And, and the, the board ultimately sets the salary to an appropriate amount that they feel is appropriate to recruit the, uh, a facilitator for the program. So the, the, the steering committee ultimately decides what that salary is. And that's the annual dollars that have to be raised.
And so the thirty-five is the fee to set it up?
Correct. That's the initial startup fee.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Okay. And you're looking at the Lyft grant to fund that, correct?
Yes. Yes. Tom Hoff and uh, and Lyft have indicated because they kind of put the exploratory email out to see who was interested. And based on the reception that they've received, I think they've found the dollars based on who has expressed interest to, all signs have pointed that, you know, it's not a guarantee, nothing's a guarantee. But they have kind of inkled that they would be able to support that thirty-five. Initially, it was around twenty to twenty-five, but now they're thinking probably that thirty-five. So that's exciting, you know, to not have to come up. But we want to make sure it's sustainable. We want to make sure that we can raise the annual fee too, because if we can't, we, we can't make this a go. We know that.
And this doesn't supplant any credits or it's not a class section, correct?
The stu- the, no, I, I guess the students would be in the class, they would be getting credit. But it wouldn't take like one of our teachers to teach the class.
But it would be for high school class credit?
Correct.
Okay. And that's why the grades come back?
Yes. The student in the class and basically for us, it'd be like they would be earning two credits because they're in the same class every day, all year. It'd be a two-credit business exploratory elective. Um, that's what they would be doing in that class. And then we would have to review too, like if there's other credits that they could achieve while being in this. Like, you know, I, I'm just throwing an example. Like, you know, I, I'm just throwing example out there, but if, if, if what they're doing also meets a core class requirement because of the presentations they have to give or things like that, w- we would explore that dual credit if that was an option. But for sure, two elective credits in that business world for the class.
Make, makes sense. Um, so I was looking through my emails trying to find, we have that Pathways that Krista Nelson is doing, um, through Southwest Pick or Pick. And this is exactly what we come up with every single meeting that we really want to do and just can't figure out how to do it. Every business owner is like, yes, please, please let me tell students how much they can make working for me, what they can do for, working for me, all the jobs available that they can do. We'll train, we'll do whatever, they can come work for us, we'll do all, this is exactly what they want. So I think this is the vehicle to get there, this looks really, really cool. Um, and so that was really the sticky wick is I'm like, ah, I don't think there's any business that could like send somebody to support this. But we actually hire someone to facilitate this.
Correct, and in some communities they've, they've actually hired retired teachers. Because then it's easy on the licenser side to make sure that high school credit is happening. But the facilitator, they, they don't call them a teacher because they're not really teaching every day. It's facilitating the business visits, facilitating the speakers, all of that. And then they give the credit based on successful completion of the course, you know, and they, and they report back, so. But in some communities it is a retired teacher, but you know, as, as Tyan and I kind of brainstormed, you know, we, we think there might be some local people that may or may not have a teaching license, but also some people that might have had some business experience that they could bring, but would be very good with students and be able to facilitate this well, so. Um, but we don't have the person picked out, you know, yet, we know that. But the advisory board, and it, it might not be a Wyndham person either, it could come from an area community that has a person that's very willing to do it, you know? That'll just depend on the other towns we're able to engage with.
And in Googling it, it looks like Southwest Minnesota CEO was what, when Laverne adopted it and they've been doing it for four years and they have like ten to fifteen students a year, I mean, it looks really professionally done. Like they do headshots of the graduating students and...
It, it's a whole deal, it's, it's very well done and Midland, uh, you know, what we're doing to engage with them, they really walk you through the process to do it right.
Yeah, well, I can say poet would say absolutely, this is something they would step into. And I'm sure there's a lot of businesses that would be grateful to have this brought in, I think it's fantastic.
And I do think that that is, uh, an advantage I feel for the school working with us at the chamber, being, having that connection to those business owners, but also having it as a community project as well. So I know Pathways, I've sat on that stuff, yes, I agree. It's definitely needed, our kids want it and so do our business owners.
Do you see this as kind of a freshman oriented or I can see it any of the grades working? But is it something that with the Pathways program that it works better as younger?
Most of the programs require that the student, and it's up to each district, but it works a lot better if they can drive themselves. So with that known, we would probably aim at our juniors and seniors, um, who've already maybe taken a couple of our intro to business classes that we offer as a sophomore or freshman. And then this is more of an advanced, um, course in business, so. It wouldn't be a prerequisite, they wouldn't have to, but it definitely would benefit them to take our four kind of business course clustered classes before they would be in something like this. But I think it's definitely in the district's best interest to say it's juniors and seniors so they can drive themselves.
Great, that, that sounds great, so zero cost to the school district, but yet it could benefit our students, that's a good thing. So it wouldn't really add a workload to any of our staff, Brian would overload you in any way or you're, you have to do that. It sounds like you're happy to help.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, do it, do it.
We're, we're all good, soon as Jessica's back from maternity leave, we're all good.
Good deal. Um, other districts can participate, uh, it's nice to hear that the Laverne chapter is going well. Uh, Bruce asked what grades, um, other districts in the area can participate? And it sounds like speaker, hearing from Joel and Joseph and your family has businesses here, you work in business right now too that from your perspectives, there's a need for it. It's nice to see that kids can come back here, um, and have something that might draw them back even more than, than just family or something. Thank you very much, any more comments for, uh, for this, the CEO program? We're in the informational stages at this point, so keep gathering that.
And I guess if, if the board is agreeable to it, um, Tyan is going to start working with the business community and, and, and reach out through chamber connections to start gauging some interest. And I am going to do the same with, uh, the school community and kind of let them know if, if there is interest, we're going to be contacting you to set up a meeting with Midland so that we can start to create the exploratory committee. So it's kind of a, is there interest? And then we're going to have a meeting to really figure out if we can do this. So that's kind of where we're at, if, if you guys are okay with that, we're going to proceed to start talking to schools and businesses.
Okay, we could give Brian a head nod or a thumbs up that we're interested.
So what will take place is basically he's going to continue pursuing, then as soon as they get to the point of saying they're going to form a committee, that the, that the school board would say we're in support of this formally for that as...
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. Because if, if we find out that there's no, you know, other schools can't make it work or there's not business support, it kind of just, it would have to die at that point, so.
So once they get to that point where they can move forward, uh, Mr. Joyce will bring forward a motion of your full support for moving forward with this program.
Thank you all. Thank you, Tyan.
Thank you for that very much, number nineteen. Number twenty, discussion Wind Mary Health Sports Medicine Contract, this is a information piece here. Oh, sorry.
I was making sure we have the minutes reflect that.
Oh, very well, thank you for doing that, for that point of clarification.
The, the, the next step will be for that. Um, so, uh, Wind Mary Health Sports Medicine Contract, I sent you it, our attorney sent back to us, I didn't want to put that in the package because I wanted to have the, um, board, um, meet with, uh, Wind Mary Hospital to sort through those items, uh, that we had before, so we can make sure we get that moving forward for the benefit of our student athletes with this, um, if at all possible. Um, so that's the, sort of the direction I'm recommending that the board takes, assign at least two board members to work through that process. Because it may take you to, um, May to work through that on and off, I don't think it will. Um, hopefully it'll be a lot faster than that. And then, you know, the financial commitment they're asking is four thousand dollars per year, which is a training to make them certified to work with our athletes. Because they're trained well beyond an athletic trainer, but they need to have that one piece to cross over, so. Questions or concerns about that, that's all I'm asking for.
Did you want to speak with us individually Wayne and see, or did anybody individually want to share their, um, interest with Wayne about communicating with, uh, Wyndham Area Health on that? I know I had some pretty severe concerns when we went over that contract, but, uh, you'd like to work on it and...
Well, yeah, I think it's necessary, I mean, um, with this, we're one of the few schools in the entire of their size that does not have an athletic trainer and we currently do, would not be able to staff an athletic trainer ourselves and the hospital does not have an athletic trainer. So working with Mrs. Elder, uh, Terry Elder on this is that there's a way to do this with somebody who's, um, uh, got possibly a doctorate even in, in physical therapy with this that can actually do the training that's available for this to meet that. And then they'd provide that service to our student athletes in our school district, um, for the cost of just completing that training of four thousand dollars. So that'd be an annual piece there. The question is how, uh, the contract terms I think is work with, I'm not worried about the licensing questions you have because I dug deeper in that and as you saw, um, is how you want to work through the issues of, um, whether it's branding or advertising, which I think can be worked through. It's just that that way, uh, board members beyond next fall, not me, of course, have a full understanding of that contract to move forward, so they understand if, you know, you, you put a track in, with an athletic complex and who has advertise, controls the advertising rights of that. I mean, I think that's a part of the concern was to making sure that we have that. Um, do we still can maintain our control of ad, of all of our, um, advertising rights except for sports medicine? Because they're doing this at no cost to us other than us paying for the training fee. They have the sports medicine, but we have, we can contract with the hospital, a clinic provider to provide advertising for, which would help maybe offset costs for a scoreboard, construction or something, things like that. I think that was another piece that you had, Dustin.
I had reached out to Terry Elder and, uh, she, uh, from speaking with Erin Relaney Message is open to visit a little bit about this, of course, because I know you'd mentioned Terry. So if anybody would like to join in, we could just start visiting with Terry at that point. Again, this is informational, feel free to reach out, uh, to me if you like or Wayne.
Realistically, I think you're going to be sitting with, uh, Terry Elder and probably the hospital administrator to make sure everybody's on the same page for the Wind Mary Health Hospital. And they'll have to go back through maybe even their board to make sure everybody's on the, understands what both sides want. Look through that. Who would like to volunteer? Because I think this is one of those things that if we don't get going, they won't be able to hit their summer training deadlines and then we'll miss another year, half year, then another half year and moving forward.
Um, I can volunteer for that, I do, just for my personal interest in, in it, but, uh, if anyone else would like to, it's not like I need anything more to do.
I'll work with you Dustin to, yeah, hopefully get this done this spring.
Okay, thank you, any questions or comments on that, number twenty? If you do have any or feel like you'd like to help in any way, please contact myself or Wayne or Peggy. And that brings us to number twenty-one, approval of the middle school, high school rooftop unit project. Uh, this is an action item here and again, we have some prices to look at as well as the equipment and so forth.
So as we work through the project here, our bids did come in a little bit higher than anticipated because we did not receive any in-contact information from Honeywell. Um, we only had one bidder on that, that was actually Elite Mechanical. When you look at that, it's a one point nine million dollar bid and then we had sixty-five thousand dollar add for the, um, powder coat room with this. And then we had a one hundred, uh, forty-eight thousand dollar deduct for the, um, uh, going to Johnson Controls. And we tie the Johnson Control System for half our building back into the controls from the elementary if possible. So we, we're already running two systems, so having two systems dug in that field was an issue with that. So for the RTU HVAC unit, you're looking at about one point seven five million. Um, the sixty-five thousand dollars for the other one would be coming out of some money that we've saved and/or capital outlay. But the HBU, HVAC RTU, we'd pay for in three ways, Peggy Heck, she has the capital budget, she'll pull up here. Uh, first thing we do, we have designated and reserved and set aside nine hundred thousand dollars for S R three funds to pay for this. And we have approximately four hundred thousand dollars left over from the building bond that we need to use for building improvements for that, so we could designate that. That means we'd only need four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the LTFM and capital outlay, which is about half of what I anticipated early. Um, I did not have the capital bond money in there at that time until the, we got far enough along, we could actually close that out. Um, to pay for this, so that gives us a lot more freedom in our LTFM, uh, long-term facility maintenance and our bond and building, uh, not, sorry, our building capital fund, um, available for future decisions on that. Uh, Peggy has, she's got two hundred thousand dollars right now currently out of the middle school, high school rooftop, uh, unit replacement and that's at a, um, LTFM, is that correct there? Or is it, yeah, that's capital, two hundred thousand dollars of capital. And then we have another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming out of middle school rooftop replacement RT units with that. And then if you scroll down, you'll see that we are still at about one point one million dollars available, six hundred and sixty-eight. Um, and then another LTFM carry of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars after next year's budget in doing this. So we're still in a good position for any other fixes, repairs that we have through our facility. And that takes into account what we currently have estimated for repairs, uh, like the Winfair Boiler and other items that we have uh, within our capital budget list that if you'd like to scroll through this, Peggy's, um, done a great job of putting this together. You're going to see it at the next board meeting anyway. Um, but we're a little ahead on this to make sure it works well. Uh, it's my recommendation that A, we can afford this, B, we need to get this done while we have the funds available and actually out of reserves to take care of this, this is all be reserved dollars.
Are there, go ahead, July. Are there projections that as we see costs going up, that if we were to wait on this or part of it, that our final bill might be higher in two or three, four years?
That and your S R three funds have a limited deadline as well. So either you spin them on this or you spend it on something else. And I think without looking at it, I think it's going to be, you have to spend it by fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So then you're going to have to come up with a nine hundred thousand from another pot of money.
Makes us do, we had actually planned on doing like one or two units at a time and sort of rotate through this process. Um, which would take a lot longer, we wouldn't be probably doing the heat exchanger and some of these other items that set us up for the future, replacing our boilers uh, with steam heat, uh, when you do the high school and the, uh, old gymnasium area. Um, this really allows us to jumpstart the entire project using funds that we weren't counting on. Plus coming under budget on our building by about four hundred thousand dollars being available. So that's one point three million that we did not anticipate having. And because of, you know, being forward-thinking and saving some funds here in LTFM and the, um, operating capital, we're in a position that we can just pay for this. Could bids in next fall come in less? Maybe they also end more bidders, or it could come in more. Still, so I think you have an opportunity because of the funds that we have available to attack this project, fix our humidification problems and replace these units.
One of the things that doing everything at once saves too is that every time that they would have come to do one or two of the units, it's another crane move. And the crane coming here, here it's working, the, the units should all be there, so then the crane is working its way around in the day or week that it takes, so that helps too.
When we had talked with Justin, what was the number that we had hoped to see?
She, it's over by, I think total was just about one point seven million? About one point seven, a little over, one, one point seven two eight, I think. And so this one point nine includes contingency, but we, I'd recommend you use the Johnson Control Deduct to get it to one point seven five, um, for that. Now with this, you have to realize the sixty-five thousand dollars alternate bid is something that we're going to have to come up by capital also with that. That's above the one point nine.
And that's not in the budget, I'll have to go back and put it this way.
But within the one point four million we have carryover that we're going to be just fine with, or one point two million, I'm sorry, carryover. Um, we'll be fine with that and that's that powder coat room that we need to get done for the CT courses.
Where is the, where are those units on their expected life expectancy right now? About at the end, I think for the brute...
They're at the end, so we, we can still, you know, um, repair and fix and that, but some of them, it's just going to, the controls is the issue. Uh, the controls are outdated and trying to replace controls on the old units with new controls, um, does not marry well into the systems very... And so it's time to just take that with the new controls already attached, move it in, um, move to Johnson Controls so we're not in that Honeywell captive stage. Because that's something we'd like to do in the future anyway. And the next process is, um, sometime in the future, the board would replace the, um, high school area, the high school commons, the music room area and the, um, gymnasium locker room, all those units. And when that would happen, you would actually take out the hot water or the steam boilers and put in hot water recycling boilers for the entire system to be even more efficient at that time. But without the S R funds and the building bond carryover, um, this would probably be still like a s, eight-year project to get these seven units done. It, it accelerates us quite a bit. We might get it done in five if we pushed and pushed some other things off, maybe, but you're not gonna... This is a rare chance to get this done fast with funds that we weren't expecting.
Bruce, you've worked on these things, what's your final opinion?
Yes, they're at the end of it, their expected lifespan. You can keep working on it, keep going, but we're finding the trouble is the, uh, control boards, they're getting used ones that are, have been redone. And, uh, how much do they cost? They're up in the five thousand area when they... When you can find them, so, and when you can't find them, they're not running. So.
So it seems like it's time to step it up and take the bullet and go forward?
I think the one at a time, what was going to be was as a unit went down, it was going to be cannibalized to keep the other ones going as they need, you know, so that you take the control board off of that and use it until that one would go.
Replace the new one with the, replace the old one with the new one and do it one at a time and at a quarter million dollars popper, a hundred and fifty or whatever would have been a pre- unit. So my recommendation is you take the bid with alternate A one and A two both accepted.
Okay, so any more discussion or anything, comments, questions? Okay, so, um, ready for a motion and that would be A one and A two, Wayne, you mentioned. And then there was a question of the Johnson Controls Deduct.
A, uh, alternate A2 is the Johnson Control Deduct and A1 is the powder coat room. So our base bid to go from 1.9 to about 1.752 million approximately on that. Uh, it's loose change. And then the alternate two would be to get the powder coat room done for the CTE area for the paint booth.
Okay. It's nice to be in a position and an opportunity to have this available right now from what my thoughts are and working on the committee for that. So that's a good thing. Um, any final comments or questions? All right. This is an action item. So seeing that we're open for motions?
I move to accept the bids with the alternate A1 and alternate A2.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Barb for the motion as it is mentioned up there on the screen. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you for the hard work on that. That has been a big project. I know Wayne, you've been talking about that for years. So thanks, everybody. Number 22, any other items for the board? Any other items? Seeing as there are none, I want to thank everybody for being here again. Thanks for your input, your hard work. It's always greatly appreciated by the community in the district. Have a good evening and 23, we adjourn.